Good evening. Thank you for joining us here tonight. I'll call our meeting to order this evening at 6:02. All trustees are in attendance. We will rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to your Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our consent agenda this evening. I would hear a motion to approve our consent agenda. Trustee Brazil, second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez DeCaro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are now into the public comment section of our agenda this evening. Thank you for all those that are interested in participating in the process and signing up to speak. You have three minutes. We will see if we can run a timer. If not, we'll do one on the phone. If you have any handouts and you'd like to provide those to the board at this time, please go forward to do that. Otherwise, I will call for... Otherwise, I will call the first speaker and the second speaker both behind them to allow them time to prepare to speak. We have 60 minutes for our public comment tonight. Thank you. All right, our first speaker this evening is David Rice. And following Mr. Rice, the next speaker will be Ann Elwell.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, our Father, our Father, and our Son, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who are trespassing against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. What I'm about to share is documented evidence of coordination to alter public meeting records and obstruct transparency. This isn't speculation. It's a paper trail of emails with timestamps. On Tuesday, May 27th, the library board met. During that meeting, Treasurer John Garrity asserted his statutory authority to review financial records. Interim directors Tori Pigram told him, "It does not, John, it does not directly define the board's legal authority. This is a public record." Thursday, May 29th, they sent a simple administrative question to library staff, "Who has authority over the YouTube account?" I mentioned no video problems. It was purely a procedural question about account management. That same day, at 4:56 PM, Mr. Holliday sent an email to Ms. Kirby and Ms. Pigram stating, "We noticed a glitch slash error around the 13:30-ish marker on the uploaded video. So to avoid confusion, I'm pulling the video off YouTube and re-loading a fixed version." Think about that timing. How did they notice a glitch when I only asked who manages the account? What was this glitch at the 13:30 marker? It was Pigram's recorded defiance of board authority. Friday, May 30th, two things had happened that exposed the coordination. First, at 12:35 PM, Pigram emailed Holliday, thanking him, "Thanks for the heads up and your diligence and attention to detail. I'm grateful for all that you do." She's thanking him for restoring the recorded insubordination to the public record. In that evening, Pigram responded to my simple question claiming, "There are no records that meet the parameters of this request." The same day she thinks some for editing YouTube content, she told me no records exist about who has YouTube authority. But it gets worse. In that same response, Pigram tried to discourage me from contacting board members, claiming it could violate sunshine laws. She also stated I had no right to contact the library's attorney, even though he had contacted me first in previous emails. Library administration has no authority to restrict citizen communication with appointed officials or legal counsel. This was not a technical glitch. This appears coordination to alter public meeting record, remove evidence of an interim director's insubordination, and then lie about it while trying to block citizen oversight. My innocent administrative question triggered immediate action to cover a Pigram's defiance of board authority. The paper trail proves it. When public officials coordinate to edit meeting videos, lie about having records they demonstrably possess, and try to restrict citizen communication with oversight boards, transparency laws become meaningless. This timeline documents exactly that pattern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Ann Elwell. After Ann is Reggie Mitchum.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Elwell. For the last 40 years, I've been a resident of NIXA. And for most of those 40 years, I've been a card-carrying patron of our Christian county libraries. Tonight, I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of southwest Missouri, representing Christian, Greene, and Webster counties. I'm a member of the League. Our League is a permanent supporter of public libraries, which we view as a fundamental community service. It's clear from library statistics that Christian county residents love their library. Since 2017, when county voters overwhelmingly passed the library tax issue, use of the library has only grown. In spite of documented community support, the board has moved to make significant changes in our library system. This has resulted in both the resignation and even the firing of professional staff. Now there's an effort to rewrite library policies in a manner that breaks from professional library standards. A major concern of the League of Women Voters are proposed policy revisions which remove more inclusive library policies, replacing them with more restrictive policies. For instance, the title of Guiding Principle 1 is "Preservation of Heritage." This may be interpreted the wrong way as it implies that multicultural materials may no longer be allowed. We trust this is not the case. As we know, much of the enjoyment of reading comes from experiencing ideas and situations that are different from our own. Consider the community standards staved in the new policy draft. They may be much broader than the board actually realizes. At your monthly meetings, many of the same people present the same public comments month after month. These folks are justified in voicing their opinions, of course, but their views may not be a true reflection of our wider community standards. Lastly, the strong support of public libraries by the League of Women Voters leads us to respectfully urge you to provide the public with more transparency, more open public meetings, and fewer closed meetings. We urge you to engage with a wider swath of the community. Your website defines your role this way. Trustees ensure that the library fulfills its mission of building community for all. We thank you for your service and respectfully urge you to reconsider the changes you were making to long-held library standards. Ask yourselves if you're attempting to fix something that was never broken in the first place. Thank you.
Next speaker is Reggie Mitchum. After that, Kevin Bright.
I've got about a two-minute video here that I want to play at this time, so...
...overdemonic activity I've ever seen chronicled in the national news. I've never seen anything like it. I'm going to show some disturbing images. It's a transgender dude. Now remember, he's targeting Christian children. Look at the things that are written on the gun clips that he used to kill Christian children. So you got here four of the children. Go to the next one. He wrote on it, "Where is your God?" Okay? Go to the next one. "Israel must fall." So we're noticing a pattern here. Okay, this is a person who is feeling non-gendered, non-binary. What do you want to say? Interestingly, in the Bible, guess who is not gendered in the Bible? Angels and demons. They are non-binary. They are gender-fluid. They're targeting children. They're targeting Christians. They're targeting the land and the lineage of the Lord. Well, this is starting to sound a little creepy. I wonder what's going on here. Go to the next one. What this dude was using for target practice is literally a picture of the crucified Lord. Now let's go a layer deeper because it gets a little creepier. This is the next one. Is this drawing that he had in his notebook of him looking in a mirror with a demon looking back in the mirror? And then there's all this writing. And this is a translation of the writing. And the translation is, "Who? When will this end?" So you have a tortured person, an oppressed person. Help me. I don't want to help. And then what's the demon say back? "Kill yourself. Kill." Listen, bro. Sometimes, the greatest argument for the existence of God and the truth of Christianity is the very obvious existence of demons. That's that right there. It's literally like somebody opened a Bible and went, "What did demons do?", and then they did that thing. So every Christian should see this stuff. And we should go, "Hey man, I know exactly what that is, that heat that is in the world." This is the most overt demonic activity I've ever seen chronicled in the national news. I've never seen anything like it. I'm going to show some disturbing images.
You know, I've, for the past three years, have mentioned several times of why it's so important what our children listen to. The eyes and the ears is the gateway to the mind. The mind is the gateway to the heart or the spirit. And the Bible says, "Out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth is going to speak. Life and death is in the power of the tongue." This video was about the man about a month ago, 23-years-old, that went into the Catholic Church and killed two little kids and wounded 17. He was a transgender. We've seen the same thing happen again last week, the 22-year-old that killed Charlie Kirk. Please get something done about these books, and let's protect our children.
Thank you. Kevin Bright, followed by one of you, please.
All right. For a few years now, we've shared our concerns over the culture that's influencing our kids within our public library. We've spoken about the hazards and dangers facing our children, our families, and our freedom. During that time, we've been told that we cannot pray, that we are a minority, and our opinions don't represent the community. This system was broke. We're sure proud that we're getting back on track and getting back to recognizing some things that needed to be cared for. We've been called names. We've been threatened. We've been criticized. We've been villainized. And we've been slandered. Flat-out lies have been posted on social media against us. The bias of the media has been hostile and partisan. The police have been called. And we were told to leave the parking lot after a board meeting. Board members and citizens were visiting just outside these doors. Even so, we choose to continue to speak. On the national level, we've seen the results of allowing this radical rhetoric to continue. Words and behavior mean something. We all deserve to live in a country where we do not have to fear for our lives simply for stating what we believe in. Caroline Levitt stated, "We must continue to call this wickedness out. It's the only way that our nation can heal." Charlie Kirk was murdered for exercising his First Amendment right. Prosecutor Jeff Ray stated that the suspect had become increasingly concerned about gay and trans rights, and that he had grown apart from his family's conservative views, citing Robinson's relationship with his transgender roommate as a factor. That young man was influenced by the radical material and rhetoric we ask you to remove from our shelves our children and our youth have access to. This is why we're here. Charlie Kirk's wife, Erica, explained, "My husband, Charlie, he wanted to save young men just like the one who took his life. That young man, that young man on the cross, our Savior." He said, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do. That man, that young man," she said, "I forgive him. I forgive him because it's what Christ did, and that is what Charlie would do." The answer to hate is not hate. The answer from the Gospels is love, and always love. Love for our enemies and love for those who persecute us. Choose prayer. Choose courage. Choose beauty. Choose adventure. Choose family. Choose a life of faith. Most importantly, choose Christ. This explains who we follow. This explains who we are. This explains our concern for our children. What we're asking from you is this. Make our library a safe place for our children where they can find the resources they need to live in liberty, prosper, and have the opportunities that freedom demands. Thank you. Father God, I pray blessings and wisdom for our library director and for all our board members and everyone in this room. Father, thank you for what you've done and praise you for who you are in the future. Amen. In Jesus' name.
Kevin Bright is up, and Mike Sullivan is up. It's not words, all right?
That's not words.
Okay.
To the board and the new director, Will. Thank you for applying reason and being willing to listen to myself and many others in our community. That's all I've ever wanted. That's all I ever asked for. And that's all a lot of people ever ask for. When my daughter told me a few years ago that she could no longer bring her three homeschool children to the library because of all the random, age-inappropriate materials scattered, like landmines in the kids and youth section, I was beside myself. Homeschool parents are forced to pay both public school and homeschooling for their children, and most of them are one-income families. They have to use the public library. Kevin and I thought we could reason with the board, of course, and let them know that as tax-paying citizens, we deserve to be heard. And let me tell you, at the very least, if all that was done by others that were on the board at that time, we wouldn't have had the explosion. We would not have had all these lawyers. None of this would have happened, I believe. Number one, there needs to be a balance as to how many of those books that they purchase. The current practice of buying an endless cavalcade, there's hundreds of them, of these new questionable books while at the same time clearing the shelves of the classics needs to be changed. At the current time, they have a policy. They won't buy books that are over six months old. So if a classic gets torn up, they're not replaced. Thank you. And this is not book banning. It's absurd to think that every library can have every book. They can order books like we have to. There needs to be a way, number two, to contain those books in designated areas to accommodate parents, particularly parents with multiple children of different ages, to feel comfortable to come in, relax, and let their children browse. You can't just let them wander. You don't know what they're going to find. They don't know where everything's at. Perhaps that means creating a family-friendly section. We don't mind being labeled. And possibly even having a printed-out, family-friendly wayfinder for parents and grandparents who are interested. Over the last two and a half years, I have been amazed at the response. Absolutely no solutions or even a desire to get along from the other side with conservative citizens. Not only did we have to deal with all the name-calling and many of the things that Kevin spoke about in his comment, but at one point, at least one of the folks in our group was followed home. Another time, one of our group was threatened and doxxed online. I believe the sheriff was called. And yet another time, one of our group had a nasty, obscene, personal article left on their car on the handle on the side that their children get in. That is the evil intimidation and dehumanization that leads to things like what happened on September 10th. The escalation needs to stop. It's time for this community to dial things down and actually work together. We've got a good start with our board. Thank you again.
Mike Sullivan is up, and Reggie Garrity is...
Sorry, I didn't step out long. You were speaking just a minute. Besides, I'm wearing my glasses, so... Don't give him that one more, though. Good evening. Thank you to the board for letting me speak. I apologize. My wife and I were pretty persistent in coming the last couple of times we missed because of the complex. I missed the signs. When I was here before, they had the signs saying, "I love the library." We all love the library. We wouldn't be here. It's great. I want to speak tonight on truth. I believe we all are seeking truth. I don't think anybody wants to stand up here in the light of day. I think everybody pretty much wants to hear the truth. And the same applies to your kids. You know people like your kids. You want them to hear the truth. So here it is. There are only two genders, male and female. And it's scientifically impossible to be a transgender. You can change your body parts, your voice, your clothes, et cetera, but you can't change your DNA. If you're hiking in the woods and a bear eats you, and later they're trying to identify your remains, they'll send the stuff to lab. Results will come back, and you will either be a male or female that you were assigned at birth, and nothing else. No other options. That's it.
Very good.
This is all certified truth. I mean, this is nothing I make up. This is just the truth. But now we'll get into beliefs. I believe the truth is found in the Bible, God's Word. It's very appropriate. They were speaking of the Bible, best-selling book ever at the library. I try to read the New Version every year. I've never found anything in the Bible that's not true. Now, there is some times you think, "How in the world? How could that be?" But usually, if you go to research it, translate the words, the way words are translated different from they are now, or the way their customs were, you can solve it out. Never found anything that wasn't true. So, summing it up, if you're seeking the truth, it's found in God's Word, His Son, Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
Reggie Garrity is up, and Elizabeth Dujash-Buskert is next.
Okay. Providing children with access to harmful materials is not an expression of free speech. It is child abuse. According to Cleon Scousen's book, The Naked Communist, there are explicit goals to overturn our republic. Among them are, quote, "to eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press", and, quote, "to break down the cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography and obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV." This book was recently recommended by Dr. Ben Carson. Our collection does not have The Naked Communist, but a formal request to have the library added to the collection has been submitted. Last month, a citizen exited the library board meeting when the board made a first reading on revising the bylaws to reflect a disassociation from the American Library Association. The quick exit was later explained in a social media post deprecating the removal of references to the American Library Association. The ALA is a disruptive, communistic organization that promotes the idea all children should have all books and materials accessible to them, regardless of content. According to the former executive director, there are currently about 400 books in the children and teen sections of the library that include LGBTQ+ books. That does not include Critical Race Theory, or DEI, or other materials, including books graphically describing rape and incest. We are, of course, experiencing the destruction of our children's innocence, even here in Christian County. We cannot allow this agenda to redefine what our First Amendment means. There are limits to speech, including the incitement to violence and obscenity. And children most certainly do not have the same free speech rights as adults. The Supreme Court held in Ginsburg versus New York that the government has leeway to regulate speech that is harmful to children. Quote, "Constitutional interpretation has consistently recognized that the parents' claim to authority in the rearing of their children is basic in our society, and the legislature could properly conclude that those primarily responsible for children's well-being are entitled to the support of laws designed to aid discharge of that responsibility. Providing children harmful materials, often without parental knowledge or approval, aggregates the authority of parents to raise their children as they see fit. Restricting a child's access to these materials is not censoring or banning books. It is curating them in a way that protects both children and parental rights. It is regrettable that society has become so confused that protecting children is considered a subversive act in the eyes of some in our community who are blinded by the communist agenda. I am grateful that the board has taken this step to protect children and parental rights by refusing to be caught in such a dark agenda."
Elizabeth Dujash-Buskert is up, and Jeanne Colbert is next.
Thank you. As a Catholic, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. And please, Brother Jesus, Lord God above, if it's possible, allow people to hear me. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for talking about transparency. That was the first thing I was going to address today. I thank you. I am that citizen who left last month, sorry, Jeanne. I am that citizen who left last month. I said that it was because of the language being proposed to usurp the ALA language that was proposed. This was mostly because I did not want to confess, which I'm confessing now, that my CGM kept going off. My sugar was low. It kept beeping at me, vibrating, and I thought leaving was less disruptive than allowing that to continue. Plus, passing out is an attractive one for my size. The removal of the ALA standards... Well, I'll be honest. I just have some questions. Question number one, why? 250 years of our public library is based on the ALA standards. Yes, it is. That is how old our country is. The libraries were first established before the Constitution of the United States of America. Three, the addition of the new standards. I just want to know, what the heck does preservation of heritage mean? Is it... Are we talking about tangible heritage? Intangible heritage? Natural heritage? If so, whose heritage? Are we talking about Slovakian heritage, which I would love? Irish, great? Italian, perfect? Northeastern, native? What heritage to which do you refer? Because if it's American heritage, getting rid of the ALA is the first step to going exactly against the heritage of libraries in this country. You talk about respect for constitutional principles, and yet the only one you want to talk about is the First by restricting it. You say that there will be a broad range of materials. Well, the First Amendment doesn't say broad range. The First Amendment says unrestricted. responsiveness to community standards is also unclear. Who's the standards? What community? To whom are you referring? My Catholic Church? A different church? Known church? Satanism? I mean, what are you referring to? Because it doesn't belong here. This does not belong in this room. This should not dictate what we do in this room. Learning about these things should dictate what's in this room. Learning about the opposite of them should as well. You talk about protecting children. I have a big question. Exactly, why do we need to rewrite the federal and state laws of Missouri and the United States to protect children? Why do you need to restate SIPo, which, by the way, is about the internet, where parents don't have control? Why are you removing the control of parents so that you can tell them what their children have the opportunity to look at? And by the way, lastly, that book that they're referring to in the children's section that is LGBTQ, one of them is "And Tango Makes Three: A Story of Two Male Penguins Who Raise an Egg." How dare you?
Thank you. The ALA was started in 1876. Please, yes, please. Our next speaker is Jeanne Colbert. And our final speaker this evening is Greg.
I'm here to talk about the library. It'd be nice if the library board members could maintain control of the room. That would be terrific. In your mission statement, you say that this is a welcoming space. Welcoming to whom? I'd like to know, who is welcome here? Are people that are transgender welcome here? Are people who are gay welcome here? Are people who are interracially married welcome here? Are children with disabilities welcome here? Are people who are not documented work, documented residents welcome here? Who is welcome here? I'd like to know that. You mentioned that the library director should report to the library board regularly, but no less often than once every six months regarding the library compliance of this policy. What about the public? Does the public get to have a report? I missed last month's meeting, I apologize. I know that the thing that you're voting on today is from July. I see a lot in here that needs to be addressed before you vote on it. It says, "No age-appropriate material in any form under corporate state regulation." What is considered age-appropriate? Do you know? According to the state, what is age-appropriate? And statutes along with the libraries partnership, appearance guardians will aid in protecting minors, guide implementation of this policy to avoid exposure of inappropriate content in the children's section and teen section. Isn't this a parent's decision? My parent took me to the library when I was younger, and I was with her. She saw what I was looking for. It was, she, I was her responsibility. When I take my child into the library, it's my responsibility. Parental control appropriate for children. Who's, again, who's deciding what age-appropriate means? Removal and relocation of materials. Says that people have access to it, will be monitored with appropriate guidance for appearance. Who's going to be doing the monitoring? And how will that be determined? Library staff training. Who's going to decide what that training is? What are the qualifications for staff training? Public awareness. We aren't getting a lot of public awareness. I know that you read this last month. I wasn't here, I didn't hear it, so I had to pull it up online. But there's a lot of non-transparentity in what is happening. It says that staff will assist parents in choosing materials that align with their values and ensure their children are exposed to age-appropriate content. I suggest that you add in there what's requested. Parents are not going to need assistance unless they're requesting assistance. And again, I would encourage you to have another reading of the policy manual and address some of these issues. For the record, the man, this has nothing to do with the library, but I have a little bit of time left, so I'm just going to say it.
All right, our final speaker this evening is Greg.
One thing we can agree on is this weighing is very low. I would like to share with you a bit of American history as it relates to your opinion decision regarding the American Library Association's guiding principles for our county libraries. On January 30th, 1933, a failed artist and frustrated political agitator was appointed the chancellor of Germany. He quickly rose to become a nationally recognized right-wing leader. Four months later, on May 10th, books deemed un-German were burned in public ceremonies. By July, a federal law enforced sterilization of those deemed hereditarily diseased by the leader's administration. Soon after, a large segment of German citizens was labeled as outcasts, enemies of the state, and far worse. Two years later, race laws were established in Germany. This action foreshadowed the unimaginable suffering and cruelty that we now refer to as the Holocaust. In 1938, back in America, Forst Walden, a Des Moines, Iowa librarian, observed the rising tide of German expansionism and recognized its threat to America. As a result, he pinned what we now refer to as the ALA Bill of Rights. The document was adopted by the entire ALA on June 19th, 1939. A short two months later, on September 1st, the Germans invaded Poland with the goal of expanding their oppressive ideology through the entire world, and thus began World War II. Early in this horrific historical decade was the act of book censorship. Sometimes our best intentions can lead to the worst of outcomes. So before taking action this evening on ALA's 86-year-old guiding principles, please consider that they are in fact a wise expression of and a valuable contribution to American freedom. The lessons of liberty and history and our pledge of allegiance compel us to ensure liberty and justice for all. And lastly, with respect to those of us in Christian County who see strength in this great nation of immigrants, not in front censorship and free speech suppression, but in the strength that lies in intellectual freedom, diversity, civil discourse, and open access to information in the interest of all of our citizens. Thank you very much for your answer.
All right, that moves us to Old Business, second reading of Christian County Library Policy Manual and Bylaw Drafts and Revisions, and follow up to last month's meeting. Tonight we'll hear a second reading of proposed bylaw revisions under consideration, along with additional policy amendments as a point of clarification for the board. Only those revisions to our bylaws require a first submission and writing and a second reading, not any of the changes to our policies. I would refer you to Article 6, Amendments of the Bylaw, Section 1, which states these bylaws can be amended at any regular meeting of the Christian County Library Board of Trustees by a majority of vote of the entire board, provided that the amendments have been submitted in writing to previous meetings. So tonight we have both policies and bylaws coming based on the volume we'll be working through. I would ask for a motion for each to individually be voted on and discussed for clarity so we have our minutes clear, and we have a third session and vote on individual changes. If any of those items need to be tabled or revised for future meetings, we can certainly do that as well. So, any questions before we get into the very long list of changes, votes changes? Sounds exciting, let's do it. So, first one, I would hear a motion to approve the proposed revisions of the mission statement. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve change number one, which is the removal of ALA language from pages five through seven. They are highlighted in red.
Is there a second to that motion? So, we would need a second motion for the mission statement, and we can go into discussion. Do you have it? Just page, I don't know what number it's at yet. Here is your motion.
The motion would be that we remove the highlighted in red pages five through seven ALA language and adopt the new language in green. I'll get up here in a second.
Is there a second to the motion? All right, please, discussion.
I'm not satisfied yet with the mission statement.
I agree with removing all references to the ALA, but in terms of what we can put in place of that, I agree with Kelly. I think we need to have more time to allow Will to just be able to have conversations with staff members and just be better acquainted. He's only been here for two months.
I think it might be a helpful point of clarification based on tonight's comments that this board has already removed the Christian County Library from the ALA. So, to Mary's point, removal of ALA references is to correctly align our policies to our current membership. So that is two separate things happening in ALA. We have been moved as members from, this is now to align the policies themselves to that decision that the board had already made. So just make sure everyone's clear on that.
And in terms of at least state laws, because I know that's been a question from the public formally and informally, whether or not we need to go into greater detail in however we replace specific to the law of the state.
Elaborate on that further.
Well, just understanding that while we may agree or disagree on whatever the guiding principles are, we can't deny that we are still held liable, at least right now, for what the state of Missouri says is law.
Other questions or discussion?
I think we could, so, it was, there were some, there were some language specific in the American Library Association that under the right to read, specifically that all agents had, should have access to all material. It was the children having access to any material, even that material that would be prohibited by the law. So that was, that was what drove us to remove the American Library Association. And just a reminder, the American Library Association is a trade organization, it's a nonprofit. And in practice, to hyperlink to somebody else, if they change their policies, then we in turn have to change our policies. It's hyperlinked in several places. I would propose that we, at a minimum, remove that reference and hyperlink, and you can see it in there, the American Library Association, remove all of those references and hyperlinks. At a minimum, we need to do that, because we already voted to do that. And then we can come back and see where our new guiding principles should be applied.
So get rid of the summary of the Freedom to Read Statements, the American Library, the Library Bill of Rights language? Is that what you're proposing?
Right, well, there's specific, there's specific terms that the ALA touts. The one is the Library Bill of Rights, the other one is the right to read. I personally take offense at the term Library Bill of Rights. It implies that we had founders of the country voting on it, and it was some kind of democratic process. It was not. It was a bunch of folks in, I believe, Chicago or some other place, not Oakland. And they came up with this language, and they basically have taken freedom to a ridiculous extreme, that children should have access to pornography. That's, I don't think anybody would agree that that's a good idea. In fact, it's against the law. So, we need to come into compliance with the code of state regulations. As we committed to the Secretary of State, about a month or so ago, he told him we would do it, we need to do it.
I think that a big piece of what is highlighted here for removal is about the collection itself and how items are placed. And I think we're lacking that right now going forward, and so I do think that's an ode to Will working with the staff to figure out what exactly to answer some of the public questions, how it's done. And so having how items are placed, how is decided what to buy, having those sections in. A new proposal would be helpful.
Can you say to the committee on services and staff, it's a professional. Definitely, you want the mission statement to remain, so.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, we want the mission statement to remain, because that's operational at its core. And I would say, censors disagreement, I would remove what you all agree on, and then we can build out from there. Can you add?
No, it's not going to be.
Sorry. Remove what they need to, and then we will build out. Remove what they agree on, only what they agree on.
Do we think that we have it clear here of what, can it be done in a clean manner to remove those specific portions, or is it a bit in our heads?
Well, so, I think the easiest thing to do would, is these concepts, this reads like it came right off of the ALA website. And they, there's, there's some good language in here. The problem is, it's intermixed with some things that are really against the CSR. So, I think maybe as a first step to get us to be in compliance with our own vote and the Secretary of State, we could remove ALA, the term itself and the sentence that contains it, the hyperlink to ALA, American Library Association, and keep the mission statement until Will and the staff can come up with something that more aligns to, because I know your, your, your long-term plan, 20 to 25, is expiring this year. Right, so we're going to.
The mission statement can be separated out. But my interest is getting the mission statement.
Okay, so, amendment to the motion is keep the mission statement, which is building community for all, their access, innovation, and engagement. The agreement, the guiding principles. It's a summary of a Freedom to Read, which is, that's an ALA philosophy. Putting harmful material in the hands of my children, basically, so.
So, we're, in terms of removing under guiding principles, the summary of the Freedom to Read Statement and the Library Bill of Rights.
Speak up a little bit.
You can't hear anything. Yeah, I'm sorry. So I think the potential proposal you're making, John, is to remove the summary of the Freedom to Read Statements.
Do you want to come up here?
In the Library Bill of Rights section. I believe, page three, the question is, sorry, I'll need to interrupt, but I'm only bringing it up because we have some rejected items, would we be able to make just one motion for the mission statement, and then move on to the guiding principles and make those motions, just so it's easy to organize in the minutes? Sorry, did you? No, thank you. I bumped over to the computer. That way we can keep it straight. Okay, so, the motion on the table is specific to revisions of the mission statements. Based on the director's request, would you like to draw that motion or take it to?
I would amend my motion. To retain the mission statement as is, and to remove.
That's the next one on the agenda, so, sorry, I'm getting more clear to adjust the mission statement.
I second the motion to keep the current mission statement as is.
Are you amending yours?
No, we'll keep it there. We'll just, we'll roll through with a motion for each one.
Yes, thank you. So would you like to withdraw your motion to change?
I withdraw the motion and make a new motion, and the mission statement will be retained as is. I really will withdraw it. So then the motion would be to remove guiding principles.
That's the next one. So, no changes to the mission statement. Okay, sorry, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is guiding principles.
The motion that we remove the guiding principles as they are specific to the ALA-type language of Freedom to Read Statements, that implies children should have access to pornographic material.
Is there a second to that motion?
Could you read me the statement that implies children should have?
We're not discussing this publicly, thank you though. There's a second to the motion.
Oh, it's second to that motion.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion regarding guiding principles.
Do we right now have to decide yea or nay to all of them?
I think John's, I don't want to put too much around, is trying to. I think John's, I don't want to put words here, is trying to align that we are no longer members of the ALA, so these policies no longer support an active membership. That's why I think it's such a all or nothing.
But does that mean, as we rewrite our own, we can't use bits and pieces of this?
We can. What I was going, I, you know, talking to Will, I think you wanted to rewrite this whole thing. You're gonna redo it.
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff here in Florida, of course, you know, so some things that even come back.
I mean, there's, there's some things in here that you can take parts of sentences and use them. I'm not saying that, it's just as it stands right now. It reads as an ALA, an ALA website document.
Well, and I think it's worth, because there's new people in the audience, I think it's worth revisiting the conversation briefly as to why we're moving, removing ourselves from the ALA, not just because of the access to sexually explicit material, but we also have to keep in mind that the American Library Association is ideologically driven. They have, over many years, have put together toolkits to, to push forth not knowledge, but ideologies, like the critical race gifts, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We look at gender ideology, and that is something that, many young parents like myself, I still consider myself young, but that, that there are concerns about, because when that is the focus, we're not focusing on the acquisition of knowledge.
Yep.
If, I have an old poster from the American Library Association hanging in my house, and it says, "Knowledge is free." And this is a poster from the World War I era. And you see a soldier with his gun, and his aunt with his helmet on it, and you see the stairway to the library, and you see books about mathematics, engineering, architecture, archaeology. It's, it's, it's rich content.
Yes.
And we don't have that here, because when you have the language, you know, when you have the guiding principles of an entity that is based in a city where they have different values than the ones that we have here in Christian County, then we're in trouble. What we're trying to do is meet the needs of parents, because it's, it's, it's a sad day when you can't take your kids into the library and say, "Explore."
Yes.
Roll through. That, that doesn't happen. And so, in hindsight, you know, the origins of the ALA, they started out great, they had great intentions, but it's morphed into something that I'm sure their original founders would be very shocked to see.
Yes.
You know, when you have parents who aren't comfortable bringing their kids into the library, you know, we're harming our kids because we want our kids to be smart, we want them to be critical thinkers. They need these tools. They need rich texts, rich books with beautiful stories and illustrations that are going to uplift the children. And we, we, we have to have room for that. And so, we are listening to the community. All of us here see the benefit of having an educated populace, otherwise we wouldn't be here. We spend a lot of hours of our free time trying to figure out how we can address the needs of the community and best represent everyone here. And that's what we're trying to do, and I, and I would love to see that you guys have grace on us, because this is not easy, this is not an easy task. And we're trying to ensure that we have the best possible library $4 million can buy, because that's our budget. And so there's a lot of work that needs to happen between now and when we get to a point where all the policies are finalized, but, you know, this is all done for the sole purpose of having an amazing library where that, like, that's, that's, the poster that I have in my house says, "We're knowledge is free," because right now, we don't have an interlibrary, we don't have our, we don't have Mobius anymore. We're still waiting for deposit to come, so we're very hamstrung with the kinds of, with the access to material that we need. I'm a homeschool mom. A lot of homeschoolers in this community. That we're not able to use a library right now, because of the situation that, that we have found ourselves in, where we have lots of people advocating for Evergreen, but the previous leadership didn't want that. And so, we're doing the best that we can right now. You know, we're gonna have a library where everyone is welcome, but we just need to have more time. We need a little bit more time to figure out what the verbiage is gonna look like that's gonna allow us to have guiding principles where we'll be able to, we'll be able to develop a policy to get great books on our library shelves.
Further discussion or questions on the guiding principles? So can we, can you reread the motion, please, that we're considering?
Yeah, so...
We're gonna remove, I have removed guiding principles as they are specific to the American Library Association.
Right. So, and I don't think we have to. These, these guiding principles are pretty much something that Diane and I went through. We figured they're not offensive, they're pretty much a general goal of a library, they're just, for lack of a better word, they're a placeholder into, until our new Executive Director can come up with a guiding principle that, that fits our county, fits our libraries. I mean, they're not bad. In fact, Will had said to me, and I'm sorry if I quote you, but you said you already had some kind of idea of including local heritage kind of stuff, because we, Ozark already has a section for that. That's, that'd be one component. I think we need a placeholder, we, we're gonna have a placeholder for the mission statement, we already agreed to retain that. We're gonna need a placeholder for guiding principles that are not allowing us to put pornography into a child's area. We're gonna need a guiding principle that doesn't allow for that.
I would almost prefer, though, that if we just remove the language from the ALA and just leave it, because if we put temporary texts in place, temporary guiding principles in place, and then Will and the team develop additional, you know, refine that, it's gonna be confusing to just be going back and forth, because I, 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 I don't think there's anything wrong with just, you know, taking it off momentarily, knowing that it will come back on. Because if you look at other library websites, that, many libraries don't even have guiding principles. Like, it, it's, really, there is no template for what a library policy guidebook needs to look like, from my experience in, you know, looking up other libraries and the work that they're doing. Because I think, you know, you and Diane did great work in, in getting this started, but I think there's, you know, there's room to add new language to that.
Can, and I kinda know the answer, but let me ask this question. Well, if we take away guiding principles and call it to be determined, can, can you run the library without guiding principles?
You can remove it, I can run it, and you can trust staff, we rely on our own principles.
So we just have it, if we just don't have guiding principles, we know what they are, they're in our heads already, but we need some time to formulate them on, on the, on the document, right? So you're gonna work on that?
Yeah, well, we need to have a full strategic planning cycle, and that'll begin soon. It's a little bit overdue, so...
The other proposal that I would might make is to, if you, if that was your intent, John, would be to remove specifically the summary of the freedom to read statement, the Library Bill of Rights, and specifically the second paragraph of a summary of our material selection policy. Those are the only three things that are very specifically, as you're describing, ALA language, ALA hyperlinks, and that would allow the, to leave in place for now for revision the material selection policy, the rest of it, all the other paragraphs, how we decide what we buy, all the rest of that material would remain as our current portion of our guiding policies, and then we could add back to it or revise it. Those are, I think, are the three things that you were most focused on.
Right, so guiding principles, whole cloth.
I don't know that you need to go whole cloth, though, if that's, those are under...
What do you want to do, you adjust number seven, because that's ALA.
That's whole section, summary of freedom to read statements. So that whole section from start to the bottom of the hyperlink. Going down.
To where it says, "Updated March 2019."
And then the next section, Library Bill of Rights, the entire section, updated March 2019, as Mary mentioned. So that whole, two sections, and then the second paragraph of the summary of our materials that's right here, that paragraph. So that would be three, those three changes that are currently 100% ALA language, and we would leave all the rest of that in place for now.
So we're gonna, just make sure I get this correct. Leaving this, material selection policy.
And then everything below, then.
But I think the motion that we have on the table only deals with the summary of freedom to read statements and the Library Bill of Rights.
Is this a different item, the third one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Because it's under operational stewardship guidelines.
Thank you. I did separate it in my handout, so my apologies. So just those first, no, you're totally right, so just those first two. Thanks for keeping me honest, no, this is good. Okay, so yes, those two things.
So the motion on the table.
So I, Sam corrected, that would be the whole, the whole of the guiding principles.
So guiding principles is gone, Library Bill of Rights is gone.
And Will, it's gonna, we can continue operating.
Can operate, and, and he's already started drafting a selections, a collections, a collections policy, right? So that's four to me. Is there anything I need to put back? I write to no field ALA term.
But that's the next one. It was my mistake, I thought that three pages went together, so. So currently, the motion was to approve the proposed revisions, so I think that I would make the friendly amendment to force it to wholeheartedly remove, or to there now. Which is the motion?
It's to remove the guiding principles as they are specific to the ALA.
Perfect, so we don't need to change that. Okay, is there other questions or discussion? Now that I've got myself clear. Okay, here now we can go to a vote. So again, thank you, Mary, the motion is to remove the guiding principles, those two sections, wholeheartedly, so. Roll call vote, Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Perfect, motion carries. All right, so the next on our agenda is the operational stewardship guidelines, which is what I was getting myself ahead of myself to.
What were we, the Library Bill of Rights, did we...
That was in the guiding principles.
That's in the guiding principles?
Yes.
Under guiding principles, okay, good.
So if, if my handouts and iron now straight, we're here on the operational stewardship guidelines.
Okay, I'll wish.
Which is where I was proposing the amendment, continue with the, the second paragraph. So I would hear a motion to approve proposed revisions of the guiding principles, however you would like to make the motion or... I thought we were gonna wait for Will to come up with different guiding principles.
Hey, so we're, so we're...
I'm confused here.
Yeah, well...
We're number three now, so...
Yes, which is material selection policy.
Okay.
So that is also, I would move that we remove and wait for Will's submission of a collections policy. As well, because of the language in there as well.
Would you like to make a motion to remove the second paragraph below?
Yes, is it, so this... Yes, because the Library Bill of Rights and the freedom to read statement is right off the ALA website, which includes access to all material regardless of age, so that, that's not legally compliant. So I would, I would move that we remove this, this paragraph in red.
The one that starts with, "We support the Library Bill of Rights," and then ends with "You think the library..."
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so motion is made for the operational stewardship guidelines under the summary of material selection policy, only to remove the second paragraph. Is there a second to that motion? Anybody?
Yeah.
Oh, second. All right, so further discussion or questions on removal of specifically the second paragraph of the summary of material selection policy? That's the only removal from the whole section right now. Discuss. Now that we've discussed it, we can move that to a vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
All right, thank you, motion carries. This, I don't think we mentioned this. It is, yes. Thank you. Erica, would you mind, need a motion for a moment? Yes. Motion, John, be honest, of two, for the operational stewardship guidelines, material selection policy, removal of the second paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you, it's highlighted in red. Begins with, "We support the Library Bill of Rights," and it ends with, "You think the library..."
Yes, I just want to get the language correct for the minutes.
All right, so the next one in our packet is now change number two. So I believe that this is our conduct expectation.
Hold on, so we have how this, how you decide what to buy and all that, do we move down home?
Yes, as we just discussed, unless you'd like to make a motion or motion, but I thought we discussed it, Will and the team would be making revisions there.
I don't see much happening. Angie, because I know Will's gonna address all this stuff.
All right, so I've got us on the agenda at item D, conduct expectations, library code of conduct, consequences in your packet, it's titled, change number two, consequences, page 18. There we go, yeah, I got it. The proposed change was to remove the word "will" and replace it with "may," also adding the word trespass in the first bullet. So I would hear a motion for that change.
I move that we accept the word, will, and replace it with may, and add the word trespass in the first bullet.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second on the shot.
Perfect, thank you. Is there a discussion on that motion? Since this is a short one, for the sake of the record, you have it there. Perfect, make sure everyone was able to see that, thank you. Any questions or discussion on that, those changes? And Mary, for the minutes, that's how I think it's written in that sentence.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussion on that one? Good, okay, Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, now I have us at sub-bullet two on the agenda of social media policy, staff use of social media in our handout, that's titled, change number three, social media use, page 24, added language inquiry. I would hear a motion for the proposed added language inquiry.
I move that we add, staff should not be making media posts to purport to be the policy or statements on behalf of the library as a whole on personal media accounts. This is, this is already in the personnel handbook, so it's...
That's your motion, to add the language inquiry?
Add the language inquiry.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right, thank you, please continue your discussion.
Yeah, so this was recommended, you have to be consistent with the personnel handbook. This is not to restrict free speech, right? If you have a personal account or otherwise, you just can't say, "I manager," or whatever, think the library is, you know, you can't represent yourself as speaking for the library when you're on your personal account, that's all, that's all that is, and most employers have policies, so I'm just similar to that.
Any questions or discussion on that? All right, I would take us to a roll call votes. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carle?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, that takes us to item E on the agenda, circulation policy, library cards, that is change number four in your packet, library cards, page 22. The proposed change is acknowledgement form added with the link below. I would hear a motion for that. Is what's printed there below, is that, that's the acknowledgement form that's in the link?
Yeah, I'm not sure that this is... Yeah, I'm not sure that this is ready to, to go, but I, so I think the, the use case was that parents are not signing a separate form to let them know that there is material in the library that they might object to, and there's a lot of legalese here.
We can certainly table this if it needs additional revisions, I'd rather.
I want to hear, I want to hear most thoughts on this.
Table it, okay.
Because this is something you'd have to deploy.
He's table it.
Okay.
It will sound very well.
Okay.
Unless someone else wants to make a different motion, we'll table the motion. Okay, so then, no motion there. The next one that I have on the agenda is we're now at item F, Services and Facilities for Public Use, Proctoring, in your agenda packet as change number five, Proctoring discontinued and removed from page 26. This is a whole removal of the section because as well, helped us clarify last time, we don't do that service anymore, so we're cleaning up our outdated documentation. So I would hear a motion to remove this section entirely.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
There's a good.
Thank you, any discussion or questions on that?
How are we going to word this motion? Just, where?
The motion is to remove the words in red under proctoring.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion, hopefully that was our easiest one we had. I would go to a roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's go. Number, we're on letter G of our agenda, Governance and Accountability Standards, Procurement Policy, number one, Payment of Bills, in your packet, that's change number six, Payment of Bills, page 33. Adding Language for Separation of Due Spending at Approved Thresholds and Removing Title-Specific Wordings. So you'll see there, there are removals flagged in pinkish-red and adds in green. So I would hear a motion to add language for separation of due spending at approved thresholds and remove title-specific wording.
I'm going to say so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Yeah, if you don't have any questions, no, perfect. All right, so the motion on the table is adding language for separation of due spending at approved thresholds and removing title-specific wording. Mary, if you're comfortable with that, I don't know if you want to specify. We have it as reds and greens, is what the interpretation of that motion is.
Can you read it one more time, please?
Yeah, I just was reading it as it's written on the page.
Okay.
If you're comfortable with that, that it would be the reds and the greens is what we're adding and removing.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
You, motion carries.
Under that Payment of Bills, there's one more section that needs to be changed.
Yeah, we have those changes.
Words, okay, cool.
Yeah, you have both. Yeah, you're good. All right, so then, the next item on our agenda is still item G, under Governance and Accountability Standards, now under sub-bullet two, Contract Signatures and Financial Authority, number one, Signature on Library Checks. In your packet, that's change number seven, Signature on Checks, page 33. It is to add management staff, designate and remove title-specific roles. So again, Mary, I would hear a motion on that, how that's written, and it's in the reds and greens.
So moved. Agreed.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
There's a good.
Thank you, any discussion or questions? All right, thank you, roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts? Thank you, motion carries. All right, number, letter, number three, number subsection number three, so we're under the continuity of essential operations. Does that correlate to change number eight? Yes, it does, okay, thank you. So in your packet, that, thank you, that is change number eight. Board of trustee override removal, this provision is against the statute, and staff don't have the authority or need to make these without the Board of Trustees. So I would hear a motion to revise this as written in reds and greens. Thank you, trustee Hernandez de Caro, second? There be discussion or questions on these reds and greens or this change? Okay, hearing none, we can go to roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts? Your motion carries. All right, now we're on to letter H. These are the next ones, our bylaws changes, so this is definitely our second review of these. Article one, section three, which is change number nine in your packet, the evening presence at meetings. This is already covered in statute and not necessarily, only required to open meetings. So this is reds and greens, to add the word open and remove other language. I would hear a motion to make those proposed changes.
So moved.
Trustee Garrity, second?
My second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions?
Yes, there are two proposals.
Right, and Will had a suggestion, and I want to talk about it. Do you want to go first, Will? You added, added two exceptions, I got them up on screen.
Yeah, that's, that's cool. Yeah, I would, you know, bylaws are about accountability. You all are the accountability for me, and so, you know, I think the public wants to know that I'm in every meeting that I could be. And there's already like a cutout for, if you're talking about me, then I don't have to be in that meeting. And hence my suggestions to, you know, to accommodate that. Also, I know that there was a concern about what if I'm not available, right? Or designate is not available, and so that's why I put in the second point. So if you look for me and I'm not available, that you would have a mechanism put in place to have said closed meeting. I'm sorry if that was not clear.
And thank you, because that has happened in the past, and it has interrupted the business of the board, and so we don't want to wait months over months to make changes if they're urgent or other things, or legal and make sure those are just stuff, so.
And your suggestion got me thinking, so I did a bunch of research, and the, the point of a closed meeting is that only those people who need to be there should be there, and that the Board of Trustees gets to determine who they are. And I, and I would say also that I can't imagine having a meeting without you, obviously, unless it was that. But I don't want to say, the way it used to, that you have to be in every meeting, because sometimes you're not available, we don't want a designate, we would rather have you, or we want to have a meeting, and I can't think of a reason now, but I'm sure one would occur, where we need to have a meeting of the board and we decide not to have you there. We don't want to be handcuffed that we have to have you there, because the statute allows for us to do that.
I appreciate your trust. I just, I put processes over people, and I just feel like, you know, having a mechanism in place that I should be, that is my preference. Maybe if you table it, then we can discuss the language more, or, you know, make your choice, and I'll do your will.
So we're suffering, the reason we had so many bylaw changes when we first started with this new board is that our bylaws were restricting us from doing the business of the board and the people. They were actually restricting us, and this is one of those situations. We actually ran into a situation where we couldn't have a meeting. So I, I go to statute and then go to what is required and then do that. Realize, anything we do in a closed meeting, we have to tell you about anyway. That's sunshine law. Once we make a decision, decide to take an action, we have to tell you within 72 hours anyway. So there's no secret anything happening. So I would say, let's stick to the, remove in red and add green and.
To clarify, is the first green section your proposal based on that research shown?
Yeah, I would propose that we would add a new sentence for, for closed meetings, subsection. And then say, closed meetings will be conducted in accordance to the state statute, that way we will never break the law, 610 dot zero two one. And the Board of Trustees will determine who needs to be present based on the purpose of the meeting, and then we don't have to, we don't have to talk about subsection one, subsection three, which legal and personnel. There's actually other subsections that allow for discussing competitive bids on contracts. There's, there are a few reasons. If we were discussing like emergency procedures, we obviously don't tell the public how we would deal with an active shooter or things like that, because it helps active shooters prepare for that. So there are things that we just don't share, but other than that, we'll share everything. That's what we've been doing. So I would say, let's, let's have closed meetings, words in green here, remove the ones in red, add the green. Closed meetings will be conducted in accordance with the statute, and the Board of Trustees will determine who needs to be present based on the purpose of the meeting.
So the current motion would be to accept the first section, green.
Correct.
I think technically that was friendly. I didn't realize there were two options.
And we have another motion at the end to where bylaws aren't going to require two readings. So if you run into a use case where that just doesn't work, we'll change it.
All right, is there any discussion or questions on the motion, which would be to accept the removals in red and add the first set of green proposed changes as written there, not the second set? Any questions or discussion? All right, we will go to roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts? Motion carries. All right, we are now to the second of the bylaws changes, specifically article two, section six is the change number 10 in your package. Check signatures, page 40, added designees, added designee and removed title-specific language. I would hear a motion to accept that amended change.
So moved, agreed, remove red.
That's our second. Second, thank you, discussion or questions on that one? I think everyone remembers this had come up through of staff transition planning, that it's too restrictive at the title level that way. It allows, ensure continuity of business. All right, roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now at letter J, article six, section one, change number 11 in your packet, amendments, page 42, remove the requirements for two meetings to adopt changes and added language for read adoption unless a delay is needed. Again, we have a removal in red, addition in green. I would hear a motion to accept those proposed changes?
So moved.
Trustee Garrity, second? Second, thank you, discussion or questions?
What was the origin of the two reading policy, do we know?
I don't know, it's not based in statute, I don't know.
Certainly slow, hasty changes. Public comment, thank you.
Yeah, we don't even do that for Levy.
We do, but we have a public comment.
We have a public comment, but you don't, we don't wait two months to, to accept a levy.
Other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote, trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts?
May.
I will take the tiebreaking vote as an aye and carry the motion. All right, so that is the end of our old business. The first item of new business this evening is financial reports, specifically if there's any questions or otherwise we would acknowledge receipt of these unobtained. Any questions? On the financials or on audit? They're different. The financial reports are from Mary Miller, her monthly, that used to be in the consent agenda. Not yet, no.
Not this one?
No, that's a, just our monthly. These used to be in the consent agenda. Any questions on our standard monthly, but Mary, no. All right, no board motion for our candidates. The second item on our agenda under new business is our audit. I believe we have Mary Miles and Miles C.P.A. Associates to share with us the independent auditors' report of the CCL financial statements from the year ending December 31st, 2024. That's toward the end of your packet, you'll see it, title of the financial statements. Mary, I'd turn that over to you.
Super. She said who I was, Mary Miles from Miles C.P.A. Associates. I believe you guys have a copy of the audit, I know you probably haven't had much time to look over it, but I'm going to kind of hit the highlights for you. Specifically, we'll talk about pages that are numbered one, two, and three. This is where I give my opinion, this is what you pay for. I give you the highest form of opinion that you can receive. You receive what's called an unmodified opinion, which basically means the opinion has not been modified, which I know is a weird way to put it, but that's what it means. And again, it's the highest form that you can receive. If you look kind of at pages specifically four, five, six, and seven, these would actually be what are considered the financial statements that you guys have. Four and five would be what's called the governmental-wide financial statements, and then six and seven would be your fund financial statements. I'm not skipping oh, I'm page four and five, but I would like to talk about six and seven. Four and five include the foundation, and then six and seven are just the library, like your general operations. So it's probably more what you're concerned with. So if we specifically look at what's called the governmental funds balance sheet, this would be the balance sheet that most people are used to seeing, that has like your assets, your liabilities, and then your equity at the end, it's just called a governmental funds balance sheet. Comparing between 23 and 24, your cash and cash equivalents did go up 20%. Did go up 20%. Certificate of Deposit stayed about the same, it actually went up just under 1%. The restricted cash and cash equivalents went down 26.6%. I'll specifically kind of talk about why now. The restricted cash and cash equivalents, the money that you have currently held in like your bond funds that would be related to the debt that you guys have, they have allowed you to, well, you were permitted to use that money to also pay off debt till you use up that fund. So it naturally is going down because you have paid debt. So that number going down isn't concerning, it just should happen as the time goes on. But overall, your assets did just go down slightly under 1%. Your current liabilities, your food expenses, your what accounts pay a little, what you call them, it did go up 128%. It's just it has to do with your payroll liabilities and credit cards that you, credit card that's owed at the end of the year. Specifically, like the restricted fund balance did go down 26.6%. Again, that's that restricted cash that I talked about earlier. Your unassigned, which is what is, there's not a restriction on it, did go up 13.2%. Overall, your total fund balances did go down 1.2%, but again, it's because you're spending that money on the debt. Specifically, this is kind of a question that I get asked often, is talking about like the restricted and the unassigned. That unassigned is basically like the carrier that you have from year to year. So that would be money that you can include in your budget, or that is included in your budget. And then if you look at page seven, this would be, this is the governmental funds revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. This would be like your income statement or your profit and loss statement that most people typically see in between 23 and 24. In between twenty-three and twenty-four, your county taxes did go up six point eight percent. Intergovernmental revenue did go down twenty-one point seven percent between the years. Charges for services went up eleven point eight percent. And then your grants, gifts, and reimbursements went down thirty-four point three percent. And your investment income did go up eight point three percent. I'm somewhat expecting investment income to not continue to rise since they just lowered interest rates, which is a thought for the future. Collections, which review expenditures, they did go up twenty-six point nine percent. Your personnel will stay almost the same between the two years. Operation expenses did go down twelve point three percent. You did have some capital outlay costs in twenty-three that you did not have in twenty-four, so that one went down one hundred percent. And then again, the debt payments that I was talking about earlier, the debt payment did go down seven point two percent. The interest stayed about the same between the years. But overall, your total expenditures did go down two percent. I don't think I said this earlier, overall, your total revenues did go up five point six percent between the year. So between, if we're comparing twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-three had a loss of three hundred and thirteen thousand, and then twenty-four had a loss of about thirty-four thousand, so that's about a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar difference. And again, it's because your revenue went up, so your expenses went down. So that's specifically, we kind of looked at the numbers. The, the rest of the pages from about eight, nine, ten through page seventeen, so eight through seventeen, kind of breaks down some more of those numbers. It is just what's considered your footnotes and is more informational. It's a highly interesting read. I think that's interesting. But it kind of breaks down some more information if you were just wanting to know some of the details behind some of the numbers. It also includes like your debt. So specifically, we kind of, I brushed over this earlier and I'm kind of just winding back just a little bit. So like I was saying, that unassigned fund balance that you had, like roughly like one point seven million. That's again, like money that you, it's unassigned that can be used in the thought within the past. Some of that is going to be paying off some of the debt that you're holding currently. That's going to be coming up in the future, but that is again, money that is unsigned. And then on page eighteen and nineteen are the references to the budgets. And the comparison of the actual, you were within state statute on your budget. You did not spend more than your budget. And I know I whizzed over that really fast. And I know you probably want more time to go through it, but does anybody have any questions? Yes, I know Kelly does.
Were there any goals from last year to this year that you feel like could achieve?
Um, goal, um, I'm not really like goals for me or goals for you guys.
Well, really goals for us, as you measure.
I, you know, last year, like I specifically like mentioned that it was the, there's, that you had three hundred and thirteen thousand in twenty-three. I don't remember off the top of my head why that was so big and all this because that was the year you started paying the debt in twenty-three versus twenty-four. But obviously twenty-four looks better than twenty-three, but twenty-three didn't even look bad either. So goal-wise, I mean, for me, the goal is always when I come in, how well are records maintained? How is everything easily accessible for me? If I have a question, can somebody answer the question? I've never had any problems. If we're talking about just twenty-four, I haven't done twenty-five, so I was sick and talked about twenty-five. I haven't had any problems pulling information. The staff has always been helpful, which is a good thing. And you know, one question that I do get asked often is how do we look financially compared to other like organizations, governmental organization to your size? And I feel others are very similar. You guys look very good. I didn't find anything weird, which is good, which I get asked often. Did you find anything, didn't find anything weird? So I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
I know the other one is, are there areas on here now where you are anticipating just in the landscape that we need to significantly add to that budget?
Um, no, and I did kind of like slightly mention earlier, you do have debt. You do have debt, and at some point you have to pay the debt. There is a schedule on page fifteen if you wanted to look at it and see how all that is going to be coming out and where the money's going to be due. It's something to keep an eye on. Specifically would be that debt that you need to pay off or you need to refinance it to see if you can get a lower interest rate. I think I have the interest rate is, I think the, I have the varying interest rates in there. I don't know if it can go much lower than that, but that's something to keep in the back of your mind. Like you have, I mean, not to be like, oh, you have this burden on your shoulders, but you do have debt that you're going to have to eventually start paying out of your funds because the amount that's been left over from the bonds is going to be used up. So something to think about.
I think that was my question as well is, I understand that I haven't gotten to reviewing this since we got it so recently, but is the long-term debt mechanisms covered as part of the audit? It sounds like yes, you're saying that that's what's on page fifteen.
Yes, and your compliance with your debt right now, nothing is out of the ordinary. Just again, just something to think about and to keep in the back of your mind that you do have debt at some point that you're going to have to pay off. And there is a schedule on there. It breaks down the first five years and then it breaks it down by five years after that. It was page fifteen. If you wanted to pull it up. So that's something to just keep into consideration. Like I was talking about that restricted money earlier, and this is at the end of twenty-four, so I'm not off the top of my head. I don't know. You have, you had seven hundred and four thousand at the end of twenty-four. I'm not sure what of that number is left because I believe your payment comes out at the beginning of the year of twenty-five.
Similarly to Kelly's question, do you have any recommendations for any board policy or other changes to continue to strengthen or to maintain our financial governance and transparency and debt management? I like hearing your problems.
Yeah, certainly.
Contain opportunities for improvement.
Some of the items that you, like you mentioned in your, that y'all were, since I didn't see it the first time, can read some of it. And I, I think there's still two check signatures, which I always like to see, two people signing it. And I think I, there was something about keeping the separation of duties. Obviously, that's something that an auditor harps on, more than anything is the separation of duties, on who controls what, who can do what, who can change what, access to what. I would, I would love to, when I have more than just time that I'm sitting here to go back and look and see some of the changes that you are making to the financial side of it. I would, I will say, I wish that you guys were reviewing the financial part where you used to do, where you would look at it and you approve the bills. But I don't know if it's because you, I believe before you were approving the anticipated bills. I'd just like to see because it means that somebody looked at it and that you actually read it. Because at the end of the day, these are your financial statements. So did you look at the bills that were paid and are being paid? And that was one of the ways that it can be done is if she presents, I'm Mary, the other Mary. If Mary presents it to you, you look at it, you see what's being paid. I like to see, do we approve of these bills? Do we need, some people in some cities, libraries, they'll, they'll pull a bill out if they want to look at it further. So that's something that you could do if you wanted to go back to doing it. I see why you're doing it. I mean, I see why you're doing it the way you're doing it. I wish there was like an approval process in the meeting.
Do you work with other, other nonprofits that have like QuickBooks cloud-based?
I work with both desktop and the online version. And I've kind of had this discussion with Mary and I've had this discussion with John. At some point, QuickBooks is forcing everyone to go online. Currently, you guys use QuickBooks, but you don't use it for payroll. So the reason why most people are being forced online is the QuickBooks, they're no longer supporting old versions of it. If you have the twenty twenty-four version, it's still supported. They no longer release the desktop version in twenty twenty-five. At some point, they're forcing everyone to go online. Currently, you don't have to. At some point, you might want to consider it if you were trying to transition to do it on your timeline versus someone else's timeline. And I believe I mentioned that when I talked to you about it, John, is that I have had some clients, profit, nonprofit, governmental, that when they transitioned their data over, some of it came over weird and stuff, you need to correct it. So you don't want to, you have one week to do this and you realize it didn't come over and you can't get things done. I have used both versions. I hate the online version, but it's because I was a desktop user. They completely changed the format, but with training, it is usable. So again, I heart the desktop version, but I understand the need to go online. And a lot of my accounting software in general has gone, has forced me to go online, the cloud.
Was that, and this was kind of something I had just flagged. You had said not using it for payroll. Did we anticipate that at one time there was a budget at thirty-five thousand for payroll expenses?
At one point in time, you did your payroll through QuickBooks, and that's kind of what I was referring to. So if you had your payroll through QuickBooks, you had to constantly update your versions to the newest year and to like the services behind it. But since you don't use the payroll service on QuickBooks, you don't have to switch to the online version, but like I said, at some point, they're going to force everyone to switch to the online version. Meaning, you don't have to do it tomorrow. It's not going to upload the desktop version, but at some point, you're going to probably have to switch. I have not swallowed that pill yet with my company.
So what drives that is if, if we get hacked, and I know we have some firewall protection, they won't support you from a virus to the old version.
When I say support, I mean they don't update the actual product.
Right. So there's no patches, there's no compatibility. So if we have to change operating systems or any other integrations, they won't.
If you get the twenty twenty-four version, which is the last version, they are still supporting it. Again, that's what I'm meaning, not giving them yet.
Other questions?
Oh, just one. Because we have just a little around twenty-four hours to review, is if we find something that we have a question. Is there a right to email you with the question?
Yes, you can email, you can email me, which leads to the question, did you happen to get the email that I sent you?
I have your email.
No, I meant like a few weeks ago where I sent you the copy.
I'm sorry, say again.
Like three weeks ago, I sent you the copy, like the draft copy to me.
I have the draft. I didn't have the final.
No, 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 it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that you did get that. And I, it's not me, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure like we have a way that we can communicate to each other. You can email me. Anyone else can email me too if you have any questions. And I love to ask, to answer questions. It's, most people don't want to ask questions. Like John and I have had a conversation, we have talked to each other on the phone. So please, if you have any questions, please ask me questions. So it's not, no one wants to talk about money, right? Accounting for the day-to-day. You're accountable for it, so.
We appreciate your efforts on making yourself available for any follow-up stuff.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Number three on our new business of the agenda this evening is our Sunshine Request page. This came at the request of our executive director, so I will yield the time to you.
Okay, so I'm going to try to be quick about my orders of business. But I do think that, I feel this is important enough to show everybody. So we've been doing a lot of work with Sunshine Request since I've gotten here. We remain dedicated to transparency and improving the process, and we're really trying to make it more of a customer service. So we're trying to clear it up. And we have finally gotten, not finally, actually, that it was actually pretty quick to the team. I want to give them credit. We have a page online and it has everything that will help you get started on the process. So if you're looking for a record, if you're looking for an email on a certain date about a certain subject, we have the sort of recipe here to do so. Contact information, the clear and specific requests, stated preferred format, set a cost limit, request an example. These are things that, these are tools at your disposal. I do want to note that public input such as comments, concerns, questions about library procedures, staff, that's not the same as Sunshine Law request. And so if you'd like to provide feedback or voice an opinion, please email or speak with library staff member. You can email me. The Sunshine Request process is for accessing existing documents held by a library. And I'm just going to go down to the bottom here before I come back up. We have different sort of avenues for, for, if you're looking for like a statement, then you have the Communications Department. If it's a general request for information, because not every request for a record, or rather, sometimes when you make a request, you're actually just requesting information. You can just ask us. We, we're library folks, so we like giving information. And so you, you can go to ask a librarian, you can email me directly. And then again, as far as like a request or statement, you go to Communications. If you have any questions about the Sunshine process, you can email me also. So we have a lot of guidelines. This is not the final version that we'll ever see. Someone before just helped me realize that I needed to put something in about what to do with the invoice once you get it. And then I, I, I realized that kind of on the fly. That was a little bit of a living lesson. So once you get the invoice, by the way, you'll bring it to the front and, you know, they'll make a copy. And then we'll start fulfilling your request. Right now, these are the fees. And our hope is that as we establish this as a service model, we'll be able to get these fees down. You know, my hope is that we'll be able to assign other staff to it, but I do accept the responsibility of creating a sustainable service model. That's where we're at. Fulfillment. What makes a closed record? Pretty much reasons that it might be denied or we don't have a record. Of note here, Sunshine Law does not require a public body to, a public governmental body to explain any public records or to create any record upon request. And, and so that's that, that's that area where you're just looking for information. You know, and so there are other avenues for that. We want to get you that information. It just simply might not be a record. And this may be confusing, but we're going to keep working at this site. As you, I would encourage you to sort of read through this website, give us feedback, give us questions, and, you know, we'll continue to improve it.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I think Mary had actually brought us an example from another library, and I think this actually exceeds that example. This is really excellent. And I know you and the staff have worked very hard to get a very good first draft. So as you said, it will continue to improve, but thank you very much for that. It's, I think it's an excellent addition to our website. Other questions for Will? All right, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda under new business is also with Will, our major maintenance schedule. And this should be the last two items in your packet.
So I feel like this is a really good bridge as we enter the budget season. You know, we're planning our budget. And, you know, one thing that I've been working on with the Director of Facilities is sort of creating a facilities master plan or a major maintenance plan. And I'm trying to help him because he does such a great job keeping us afloat. I'm trying to help with a forward-looking plan where we can sort of have a sober look at what's going to be needed when. And then we can sort of, you know, appeal for help when we need it. Now, Clever and Sparta were super easy with this because I know when they were built. We do have information about NIXA and Ozark. You'll notice it's not all filled out yet. But basically, we're laying out the life cycles for all the different major maintenance components of each building. And so you have, you know, HVAC systems, the roof like roofing, parking lots, electrical, plumbing, exterior signage, the grounds, flooring, paint, and you'll see like some where it basically says, you know, sort of what the where it basically says, you know, sort of what the time range would be to replace it. From my findings so far, working with the team, our priorities would be to seal the parking lots here, especially since we partner with where the drivers test, that'd be great. And then stripe them. So seal and stripe the parking lots here. Sparta, clever, I believe Ozark was done already. And also flooring, we want to start replacing flooring. And also an asterisk on HVAC systems. There are some HVAC units over at Ozark that we're having a hard time getting the, the age of the units because we can't read the age of the units. So we, and again, you know, so it's just, we're trying to get like a sober view of, you know, these are going to be the big challenges. And for all the disagreements that, that people have about, you know, how they love this library, I do think that everyone can agree that we want, you know, top-of-the-line facilities at this library. And so I really want this to be a focus of what we do next. That being said, we're going to have to wrestle with the budget. So, so it's easy to lay this out, and it's going to be more difficult to follow through, but I felt it was important to sort of let you all know, you know, where we were going with this. And yeah, it's budget season.
Tune in next month for the budget update. Thank you again. I know you and Heath, I'm sure others on the team spent a lot of time to get us to this point, so I know as the last we said, well, this will continue to review and revise, but thank you for getting our arms around this. Any questions or comments for Will or the team on the major maintenance? That is the last item of new business on our agenda, so I will call this meeting adjourned.